Let me call a meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled called and convened meeting of the City of Greer Council. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Judy Albert, if she would, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag and then an invocation for council. If you'll join us in standing, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you again for the state that you've given us. We thank you for our many blessings that we have and for the many freedoms that we here in America have and should have. I pray that you will be with us this evening, that you will guide us and lead us in the way that you would have us to go. I pray for our nation and I pray for our city. Be with us, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I saw him earlier and he's still here. I want to recognize Mr. Mike Barnes, our county council member, who welcomed you tonight. And with that, we will move to public forum. For those of you that may be new to this process or maybe not new to this process, public forum is a time that we set aside at the beginning of each city council meeting for the purpose of recognizing those citizens of the municipality who have standing with the municipality or our business owners and who wish to address councils on related matters pertaining to the agenda. It is a time for you to speak to council. We take that under consideration as we get to the issues later in the meeting. I have left my trusty red and yellow construction paper home tonight, but I'm gonna make do if we can with a one-minute warning. We'll have three minutes apiece. We've got about, it looks like thirteen people to speak tonight, so three minutes apiece at the one-minute warning, and then I will ask you to stop on the red. Okay? Fair enough. We will go from there. And we've got two issues that appears tonight, one in regards, or two folks that will want to speak in regards to the record ordinance, and then the rest are in regards to ordinances related to a rezoning in the Abner Creek, Brockman McClyman Road area. So with that, we'll take them in order. Mr. Mike Barnes is the first to speak in regards to the record ordinance.
Thank you, council, mayor, clerk. At this time, I'd like to address one thing. In 1997, we purchased McCullough's Towin. It was a business that was being sold by Mr. McCullough. At this time, we purchased it. And we were grandfathered in at that time at our location, 2110 North Highway 14 in Greer. At a later date, in 1998, we were annexed into the city limits. You had to be in the city in order to be on the city's rotation. After 2002 or so, meetings put numerous, the city put numerous tow companies on, and all I want to do is just remain where I'm at, same location, as one business, as two businesses in one location, which we were grandfathered in at the time. Another thing is I think that all trucks should be registered wherever the tow lot is. That way, the city gets revenue out of the tag, gets revenue off the trucks. And another thing is I think all the tow companies should be in the City of Greer, enlisted in the City of Greer. I think the city is big enough, since they've annexed other stuff in, that we have plenty of tow companies to meet the requirements that we might need. This time, I appreciate y'all's help and support, and I hope y'all will consider this when you go to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Danny Wolf. Your desk, sir. If you would, as you come, if you'll state your name and address as a matter of the record, we'd appreciate it.
Hello. I'm Danny Wolf from Woods Towin, had a career, 13-875 East Wade Hampton Boulevard. I've been in business twenty-five years. I just think that you need to be in the City of Greer to, if you're gonna be on the rotation list, because I had to do it twenty-five years ago when I wanted on. And that, and... They have, I think we have enough on the rotation list now. There's sixteen of us, and we've been running it, but there's several on that sixteen that has been illegal and been taking their cars outside the city. And now, the city's here trying to get a .5 location where it will help the people. It's been on the rotation list. They know the rules is that you got to be in the city. So now, they trying to open it up, the .5, and I just don't think, you know, they noted ahead of time, and they got on. Why move and not pay y'all the city taxes and have the expense like I'm having to have and the other thirteen or fourteen that's on? And that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. We'll move to those that have requested to speak in regards to rezoning matter. I am sorry, I cannot make out the first name, but it, last name appears to be Wilmack. You'll be the first one to speak. Thank you, sir. If you'll state your name and address for the matter, the record floor is yours.
Am I speaking on the rezoning Brockman McClyman?
That's what you indicated, but if you want to speak to something else, that's fine.
That's fine. I want to thank the council and thank Mark Hopper and Judy Albert for the time that they came to the church and met with us. I've been a longtime member of Fulton. My concern is basically for the travel on Abner Creek Road. It's a narrow, two-lane country road from the intersection of Brockman McClyman and Abner Creek on down towards the hospital on Abner Creek. There are several turns and twists, and there are no shoulders to the roads, and there are no guardrails there. And a semi going northwest, if it happens to be the semi coming southeast, I guess it would be, I don't see how they can hardly possibly pass one another. Taking children to school, this will be an issue for very long. EMS fire, using that road, and I can't imagine semis traveling back and forth there from the hospital up to the intersection I was talking about. It looks to me like this could become just a death trap in some of these curves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Miles Mason. I live at 250 Fay Court in Greer in the Hartwood Place subdivision, which can be seen, well, no, I'm just off that aerial that you're looking at. I'm concerned about this parcel being rezoned from residential suburban to I-1. I've sent an email to all of you, which I believe you've read, so I'm pretty much gonna repeat what I told you in the email. But we have brand-new subdivisions here. You can see the one right there where the dirt is being moved, that's a new subdivision. No houses have been started in there. And then you have this subdivision and a brand-new one there. Those are all recent rezonings by the city. I realize that this area was originally in the, in the planning, was not necessarily labeled to be residential, but that is the way this area is being developed. This is the way y'all have voted. Developers have come in and wanted that, and y'all have given that to them, which is fine. This property is not gonna stay undeveloped. I think we're all aware of that. It could have been at the point in which this document was originally put together, it could have been either way, because most of it was rural area. It was farmland with small houses or houses here and there. But it is turning into a residential zone in this area. No problems with the current, with the current I-1. I think it needs to be up towards 85, but it's got to be a decision on where you're gonna make that break and how you're gonna make that break. Are you gonna make that break from I-1 industrial, which is the least, one of the least restrictive zoning, and go from I-1 directly to residential without any kind of buffer zone? These people are not asking for a planned development. They're not submitting, saying, "We're gonna build this." I mean, maybe they could have submitted something that says, "We're gonna build some very nice, big industrial warehouse buildings and do a lot of landscaping." They have not done that. What they're asking for is I-1. I know what they've told you that their plans are, and I'm sure that's what their plans are. But I do commercial real estate, and I know that the economy changes and that things can change, and once that's zoned I-1, they could turn around tomorrow and sell that property, and anybody could use any of the zoning classifications that are allowed under I-1, a lot of which would not be a good neighbor for these new subdivisions. Thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you for serving our community.
Thank you, sir. Will Childers.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, members of council and Mayor Danner. My name is, excuse me, Will Childers. I'm here on behalf of La Jarden HOA, which is a community located at the intersection of Adaliz Way and East Howell Road, approximately one mile from the site of the properties under consideration tonight. We have three concerns with this proposed rezoning request. The first would be that the rezoning request is incompatible with the surrounding area. As was previously discussed, the immediate area around this site is largely residential. New residential developments have come into the area, most notably Overton Park, Saddlebrook Farms, Sylvan Woods, and Vines Creek, as well as my client's community, La Jarden HOA. And therefore, we believe that this proposed rezoning to I-1 is incompatible with the surrounding area. We would also submit that the type of traffic that could be inputted or impacted by this rezoning request, not the, necessarily the amount, but the type of traffic, industrial-type traffic, tractor-trailers, that is also negative impact on the surrounding areas. Third issue we would state, which is very similar to these, is that we just do not believe that it's the best use of this property. Again, it's incompatible with the surrounding residential areas, whereas church, parks, shopping, et cetera, may have beneficial impact to these residential areas. The proposed warehouse, we believe, is incompatible with the surrounding areas, and we would ask that you vote to deny this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Corey Massey. I live at 659 Crossbuck Trail in Greenville. I'm in the Saddlebrook Farm Division, right here on the lower right of the screen here. I don't have a lot to say. I think that's gonna be said better than Mr. Mason and Childers just said, but I'll reiterate some of their points. Firstly, that the comprehensive plan does list the defining characteristics of the mixed employment community, which is just north of us here, as office park or campus-like developments integrating jobs, amenities, and places of residence, whose primary uses include advanced manufacturing, research, office, and civic facilities. By contrast, the primary use of warehouses, light and heavy manufacturing, distribution, and trucking are development characteristics of the manufacturing and logistics communities, all of which the future land use map indicates is situated far north of I-85 between Highway 101 and the inland port. If council were to approve rezoning in the interest of supporting the comprehensive plan, I would hope they would do so more favorit toward commercial or service zoning development in the future. But we are speaking in opposition of rezoning at all at this time. Since the five-year review in 2015, Planning Commission and City Council have approved several requests to either annex or rezone parcels in this immediate vicinity, including five new residential developments totaling over 500 single-family homes, including to the side of Abner Creek that was previously indicated as mixed employment use. All of which is to say that the recent residential development is in line with the spirit of the future use land map, even if the districts don't fall exactly in line with the predicted split between mixed-use employment and neighborhood communities. The split has simply been moved further north than anticipated. We knew in the past that a five-year review would be necessary in order to reevaluate the comprehensive plan. A lot can and did change in those five years. Seven more years have passed since then, and recent developments show that the increased demand for a small-town neighborhood field that's close to Greer downtown continues to grow, as well as proximity to other nearby amenities and services and convenient transportation corridors. Greer consistently ranks as one of the top relocation destinations in the state of South Carolina, and South Carolina's in the top five relocation states in the nation. Demand for affordable, responsibly-developed housing will only continue to increase going forward. City Council has a great responsibility to safeguard areas undergoing or ready for such development and keep them safe from encroachment by excessive industrial expansion. Nobody is arguing tonight that we should overturn the comprehensive plan or completely redraw the future use land map, future land use map, excuse me. We're only pleading that City Council recognizes that both the plan and the map are intended to provide guidance on future development and potential rezonings that are not carved in stone. Such guidance should be tempered by weighing both recent and current developments and taking those into account when making decisions that will sculpt and shape the community for years and decades to come. Thank you for your time.
I'm Rachel Massey. I live at 659 Crossbuck Trail in the Saddlebrook community. If you're here in opposition, if you can maybe raise your hand and let them know how many of us came out tonight, and there are many more that weren't able to make it. So, councilmen, as you consider the proposed rezoning at the intersection of Brockman McClyman and Abner Creek Road, I implore you to consider the, excuse me, the dramatic effect that this proposed change will have on current and future residents of our community. The aesthetics notwithstanding, myself and countless other community members have voiced great concern over the impact this rezoning could potentially have on our home values. When I spoke to some of you over the past weeks, no one has been able to definitively say that if approved, the rezoning would not negatively affect our home values. While it is true that we have in the past continued to see positive appreciation in our home values, given the current economy, rate of inflation, and uncertainty that is currently dominating the real estate market, we cannot safely predict what this rezoning could do. We ask that you not risk our homes and investments by approving this venture. The marketability and value of our homes and the future residents' homes would surely suffer. Councilman Arrowood, when you and I spoke just last week, you mentioned frequently that when looking at the aerial zoning map and the aerial future rezoning map, this extension of the current industrial park makes sense. Councilman, I must remind you...
I did not say that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to...
Okay, let's leave names out of this.
It was just...
We'll leave names out of this.
I'm sorry. You said, "Looking at the overhead."
Let's just go ahead.
I apologize. Councilman, I must remind you that a bird's-eye view is a minute's piece in this picture. The residents in our community are on the ground driving these roads daily. The overall of our identity of our community that exists at this intersection is residential. It is both a community in appearance and in spirit. You have heard from many of our community members tonight, and you will hear from several more this evening, all of whom have expressed concerns over this proposal. I would like to point out that no one, not one of these concerns is a small matter to consider, especially when it is your community and your family that you feel are at risk. We do not wish to stop the owners of this property and these properties from selling. We recognize that this land will be developed. With the ever-growing population of Greer, it makes the most sense to keep this a residential community and allow the land to be developed as a neighborhood, allowing the current transitional area between the industrial areas and the residential areas to remain as they are. The city describes a buffer as a plant or a screen, a berm of dirt. We desire a buffer of distance and of comfort. We know our neighbors, and we know our community. We do not wish to have the comings and goings of strangers constantly back and forth to deliver and ship out parts at all hours of the day and night. Tonight, I ask you to vote, not as just councilmen, I ask you to vote as my neighbor. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I live at 1028 Abner Creek Road, and I want to express my appreciation to all of y'all for the good things that you do for us. I had a recent phone conversation with one of the councilmen regarding this rezoning. He earnestly asserted that he would do what is best for the City of Greer, as I'm sure all of the council desires to do. I believe he reiterated this in our conversation, and I made the point that we are the City of Greer. The people of Greer are the City of Greer. A city without people is dead, just like a person without a beating heart is dead. But a person can have a beating heart and a healthy body and still actually have no heart at all. Tonight, the people of Greer living in this area surrounding this acreage are asking you to have a heart for us and for all of the people that will be coming to fill the new homes and the developments that the City of Greer has approved in our immediate community. You are our representatives, and certainly should have and be demonstrating a concern for what concerns us, and you should have a heart for our hearts, and we appreciate where you've showed us that before in the past. I understand that it takes money to run the city and that people can certainly see dollar signs when this much tax money is at stake, but please don't let the dollar signs affect you and keep your eyes on the needs that the people have here. Saddlebrook is the only subdivision of these subdivisions surrounding this acreage that has inhabited. A large number of the people in Saddlebrook are coming here from other states. They're certainly rightly concerned about their property values. No one wants to have warehouses in their front, side, or backyards. And how will this development not reduce the property values of the people that are moving their families here to find a better life than they are leaving behind? There's a lady in Saddlebrook that has moved here from California along with four different households of her family. She is, she was very saddened to hear about the possibility of warehouses being placed immediately across from her subdivision. She said, "We moved here from California to get away from warehouses." Four different households moved away. Can you imagine what this would do to her? She's not the only one. I know that y'all feel that people should be referring to the land use maps, but unfortunately, a lot of people don't, don't do that or don't even realize that land use maps exist. They just, that's not what they're looking at. And the acreage that we're discussing is residential all the way around. So, this is the City of Greer. If they find it financially necessary to move warehouses and industry into residential communities, please don't do it here. Please don't do it now in this area that is so strongly residential at this point, and please don't do it now at this late date after so many residents have bought and are bringing their families here looking for a better life. If people's property's values drop, then won't that affect the appraisal values for their homes, which will then affect, which will then affect the amount of taxes that the city can and will be able to collect? Isn't there a lot of tax money to be lost with so very many houses involved surrounding these warehouses, including the La Jarden homes? I know in the, I understand the City of Greer has been advertised in other cities as being a friendly place, and it has been a friendly place, but it's not considered to our newest residents, it's not welcoming to our newest residents, and it's certainly not friendly, it's not friendly at all to do this kind of thing to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and appreciate it for giving us some time. With a slight twist of what has been already presented to you all, even about the rezoning the adjacent properties from residential to, in addition to the industrial and future expansion. In all honesty, if any of you, I'm sure, if you are well-familiar with that area because of this drawings, et cetera, it is almost choked. So far, there is only one road that, the entire Abner Creek comes from Westmoreland, goes to 101, South 101. And I'm afraid, and honestly afraid, if this development does continue, there will be some unwanted and, and serious chances of automobile accidents, used trucks, et cetera, et cetera. And just a plain car, but there are about five times or four times the large vehicles going. And at the moment, there is no place to even get out of the road in one way or the other time. So, I know the normal response that this doesn't belong to us, this belongs to the state. Sure, it does. But at the same time, if we stay in the Greer in that area, if we have no say, no matter what happens, it cannot be, there has to be areas where the state has to get involved and measures whether it is adequate or not. And a minimal expansion, if it is not done, then I sort of reiterate what our previous speaker said. So, I please, I'm making an effort for you to see how difficult it is about this single road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Chip Fogelman. I work with Arbor Land Design. I live at 116 Palladio Drive in Greenville. I've tried, I'm gonna try to answer some of the concerns y'all have heard, and I'll give you a little bit of background. My firm started working on this global commerce park in 2016. At that time, the property beside us on Abner Creek Road was undeveloped. My client even tried to purchase it. He was unsuccessful, so that's where it went. I've heard a lot about traffic. We met with the highway department, well, let me back up. We, when we first had the opportunity, my client had the opportunity to buy this piece, we met with planning, 'cause it was my understanding that we met the future land use plan, approved future land use plan by I-1 use, and we were sure that we do. So even though it's zoned RS, we meet the future land use plan. And again, all we're doing is trying to expand the existing global commerce park that's there now. Our road is stubbed out for that expansion. We planned no entrance, no access on Abner Creek Road. When we met with the highway department, they, you know, we made that clear, and they said that road is bad. I don't even, they didn't even know if they'd approve a residential drive. But I will tell you this, that if that does stay residential and it's a subdivision, there will be residential traffic going on Abner Creek Road. We won't have any. All of our trucks come out, a global commerce drive right now, they go to the interstate from our park and back to the interstate. If we expand this, we may be able to get another entrance in the future. It'll be on Brockman McClyman Road. Truck traffic is coming to and from the interstate. There will be no trucks going on Abner Creek Road. We do, I think I mentioned, we talked to the highway department. We're in the midst of a traffic study that we told the highway department, we give them a traffic study based on a whole master plan. Some of it may happen, some of it may not. We're probably two weeks away from that being completed, and we'll share that with the city when we get it. Other item I heard is buffers. I realize I-1 does not require buffers. Our first phase, we had buffers. Our master plan shows against Abner Creek Road, a 15-foot buffer, and, and we're gonna, we'll work with planning, and we'll make sure we provide whatever buffer we can to help the situation. And I'll be here later if you have any questions during your discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Coffrin.
How about Mark? Mark. I am Mark, Mark Coffrin. I live at 306 Stoneburg Farm Way in Greenville, South Carolina, and I am the developer of the property. And appreciate y'all's time here today, but just to add a little bit of what Chip was saying, the current plan is to continue the park we already have in the, in the buildings, with the buildings we already have. And, and I'm the owner and developer of that property. The tree line you see right up against the pasture is already zoned I-1, is already currently being graded for the next two buildings. So one thing about what we're gonna do is continue that, all the, all the, we would like to do is continue that, have all the streets would be internal to the property, and somewhere, if we have a second entrance, it would be up somewhere around the fire station area, as shown on this drawing, and the front of the industrial building and the front car parking lot would face Abner Creek Road. So it's the front of the building, it's landscaped, there'll be a buffer, there'll be no car access on, on Abner Creek. The car traffic would also circulate internally and come to that front parking lot. So I know it's always a matter of perspective, I'm just saying, you know, that's maybe a good place to stop with your land use plan. It is, it's an intersection, and of course, if the photo were turned the other way, you would see the airport BMW and the million square feet facility, BMW is building on Freeman Farm Road right now. So we think that we can be a good neighbor. We think that we'd have a lot less traffic with industrial uses than we would with some other residential use, and we would probably be a little bit counter cyclical in terms of rush hour traffic with the industrial property. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anthony Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Rivera. I reside at 801 Brockman McCliman Road. I'm on the corner of the intersection that we're talking about. Everybody already said it. Everything is residential around me. I see three subdivisions going in from my front door. Just more traffic. The acreage that we're talking about is, to me, residential. It's across the street from a fire department, and gentleman just said he wanted to make access on Brockman McCliman. That's right in front of the fire department. I don't see that as a good thing, especially in emergency situations. I also would like to talk about home value. I don't believe that putting a warehouse there is gonna help anybody's value. I know it's not helping mine. I live right on the corner, I've been there 17 years. I know there's gonna be a lot of development. There has been a lot of development. Our roads just can't take it. Brockman McCliman cannot take another warehouse, neither can Abner Creek. That's all I really got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your, your time and your insight and presentations to council. Certainly heartfelt in many regards, and we will entertain those with discussion here in just a little while. With that, council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. In your package, you have the June 28th, 2022 minutes. I'll entertain a motion if they be received.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for, open for any notes in regards to changes that might need to be addressed. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Vettis.
Yes.
Ms. Alberts.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Mr. Merriman, Administrator's report, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you very much. Couple things I want to bring up tonight. First of all, just by way of announcement, effective Monday morning, yesterday morning, at 7:45, the Greer Fire Department took over direct service for the northern part of the city. We had previously contracted with Lake Cunningham Fire District to cover that part of the city, but through an agreement with Taylor's Fire District, we will co-locate an engine and an engine company in the station on St. St. Mark's Road, and we'll cover that, that area of the city that was previously covered with Lake Cunningham's staff. I will say that we will continue an automatic aid agreement with Lake Cunningham, so services will not be impacted, actually to the contrary, with us putting more personnel and more equipment in that area. I would argue that the coverage is gonna be better for those residents in that area. Couple, another announcement is the Engineering Department and our Building Services Department is preparing to make its move over to the building over on Berry Avenue. John and Mike and his, and Mike's staff has done a fantastic job in getting that facility up and running. Engineering will be out of the trailer they've been in for how long, Robert, now, too long?
One year.
One year. It's been over at Public, the Public Services Department, and so we're really looking forward to getting that in there. We do plan on having an open house for city employees and council just to come by and see all the work that's been done over there. Another reminder is that the city, as of Octo, or excuse me, August 1st, we will discontinue curbside recycling. All resi, all residents and customers of Meridian will be receiving an informational postcard over the next week with details outlining that, that process. So be looking for a, a postcard in your mail, and then just keep up with all of our social media accounts, as we continue to put out information relative to that change. A couple upcoming community events I'd like to point out. Saturday, the 23rd, at 8:00 AM to noon, we will be hosting our first annual Casting with the Cop. This is a way for police officers to meet the community in informal way and promote the idea of policing as a partnership. This will be held at Lake Robinson. It'll be an opportunity for kids and adults, I guess, to come up here and, and go fishing with some of our law enforcement folks up there at the lake, July 23rd, 8:00 AM. There will be a neighborhood litter pickup on Saturday, July 30th, at 8:00 AM till noon, and this will be held at two different locations, at Hillcrest Baptist Church and BP Edwards Park. So I'd encourage those folks in those areas to join their neighbors and community partners to help with the litter, with litter pickup. Let's see, mark your calendars, if you will, for a couple things. First of all, Thursday, the 14th, Moonlight Movies here in the park, this starts at 7:00. Saturday, the 16th, the Carolina Coast Band will be playing in tunes in the park, and this begins at 7:00. And the Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce is hosting its 11th Annual Public Safety Appreciation Luncheon from noon until 1:00 at the Cannon Center. And last but not least, I'm very excited that we're going to be able to recontinue our Civics Academy. This is a chance to see how the City of Greer works from the inside. This is a free eight-week class with instructors from each department outlining how our departments work and how they work in the city. Registration opens August 1st, and there's more information about that on the city website. So I know that was a mouthful, but if there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council Administrator and Department heads are open for any follow-up you might have in regards to any of those reports or any questions you might have regarding the departments. With that, let's move to old business, the first of which, this evening, is the second and final reading of ordinance number 30-2022. This is an ordinance to amend Article 3, Records of Chapter 94, Vehicles For Hire of the City of Greer Code of Ordinances. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
I have one thing that was brought up today. Is that okay? I'm not talking to anyone.
Yeah. Floor is open for discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Let us all care about it. Maybe I'm talking too fast here. One thing that had been brought up that I'd like to bring to attention as well, I discussed it with a couple of, as you know, Mr. Vettis mentioned it, and then Danny, who also mentioned something, we referenced a grandfather. I had, I guess I had worked for a, not the city, but a different business place, and that once something was grandfathered, then it was grandfathered. So I felt like the grandfathered situation, if possible, I mean, because I believe the old ordinance grandfathered something in prior to 1999 or something like that, right? So that, that's one thing that I would be, like to see, I guess, because that's just the way I was, worked for many years, is when things were grandfathered in, they were grandfathered.
Others. What, the, the grandfathering, why is, why was that stricken? What's the reasoning behind that?
When me and Chief talked about this, our goal was just to, in part, start fresh. It's been so cumbersome for so long. Start completely over, start fresh. Everybody has the same set of rules that they have to follow, and that's, that's the reason. There's only one, one company that would affect, and that is McCullough's. There's, the grandfather, I think, Danny was discussing previous versions of the ordinance prior to me required in the city, but the, the specific grandfather, I'd have to find it in here, it was struck, prior to 99, would only affect McCullough's. And that is reference to wrecker businesses at one address. We're proposing that you can't have more than one business at a single address. So that's, I hope that answers those questions.
And what is the heartburn about having multiple businesses at one location?
Again, it just simplifies everything. The purpose, so, it's, the fair and equitable, so I guess the purpose of the ordinance as written is to provide fair and equitable and mutually protects the entrance of the public and the wrecker services, so in part, you know, fairness, and in part, again, just simplification and our ability to, to move forward with enforcement much easier since that's what we're tasked with doing.
Seems to me to you that it would give, in essence, the same business two opportunities on the list.
Right.
From the same address. Well, it would, and, and I understand the concern, and, and of course, the wrecker business is a, it's a, it's a business that, that, like a taxi business, that we set the parameters of how they operate. And just as a general rule, the government is not very good at picking winners and losers. I understand some of the reasoning behind why we are here talking about this, but it seems like we're always talking about something to do with the wrecker ordinance. Prior to this, a few months ago, we had somebody coming, and they were complaining about a competitor. Prior to that, it was other situations like that. I appreciate the work that, that the Police Department has done to try to make this better, but as, as I read it, I, I think that it's only going to, it, it's not gonna solve the situation. I don't, I, I, as a whole, I think this ordinance probably needs to be scrapped and looked at from the very beginning. I mean, and, and I've said this before, I think the best way to approach this is, is to put it out for big. Because we're, you know, we're, we're making decisions about people who tried to saw an opportunity and had to jump through some hoops in order to, to be called, come and tow cars from, from our streets. And, and I know it's, it's in our purview that we can regulate it, just governments and, and us, we don't do a good job of picking winners and losers, and when we're trying to, well, one of the things here is, is we're trying to reduce competition by saying you can only have one truck, one business, on one parcel of land. Anyway, that, that, that's my opinion. I just think the whole ordinance probably needs to be relooked at in a totally different way.
One other question I had, even though I've read it a couple of times, so it really wasn't ever clear on it. The license for their business, is that where they answer their phone at, where their office is, or the lot location?
What we're proposing, or current, okay, what we're proposing is the primary place of business, which is defined, and I'd have to find it, as the location from which they, they do their business. So they need to collect the money there, they need to have signage there, they need to meet the customers there. That's their primary place of business. That address needs to be within the city limits or within .5 miles, however council chooses, you know, to pass it, if, if you so choose to pass it, that's what we're proposing. And their trucks would need to be registered at that primary business location, and then there are lot, lot location requirements as well. Currently, maybe what you're referencing is the businesses that are outside of the city are required to have a lot location in the city, whether they use them or not, they have them in the city theoretically. They all, that I've checked, have their business license with the city, with the city at their lot location. Most of them not their primary business location. So if they're located outside the city, they're using their lot location address for their business license. This just eliminates all of that ambiguity, and I mean, if you have your primary business location here, obviously that's where your business license would also be. Does that answer your question at all?
How far is the lot? Your storage lot is one time?
So the, the first proposed amendment or ordinance was within one driving mile of your primary business location. We understand with zoning, it's not always possible to have both at one location. If council were to adopt the amended version that you have now, then if your business is outside of the city within that .5 miles, we would require, request that your lot location be in that same spot and not an additional driving mile further, because then that sort of defeats the purpose of closeness.
In the downtown distance, their office and their operating and their storage lot would need to be at that.
They need to be.
One location.
Same location. Yes, ma'am. To prevent us from going further.
And once in the city, then they have their place of business, and then their lot, even if it's outside, their storage lot, outside the city, is that right?
It's, it, it just has to be within one driving mile, not to exceed .5 miles out of the city limits. We do not want, you know, we first proposed within the city limits, and then we, we discussed the .5 miles. We are not, we are comfortable with whatever council is comfortable with, the city is. We do not want to go more than .5 miles out, because then that defeats the purpose of our, of me being able to, you know, enforce this, not driving to other cities, and also our, our customers and our citizens who are expecting their, their vehicles to be in Greer. So we don't. So we don't want to go further than that, if we go outside at all.
What was the purpose of expanding, say again, the, the, we had it, we had it where there has to be a business in the city with a true location?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So why, tell me again, apply, what's the purpose of adding the half-mile radius?
So there was, like, they've, a lot of people have come and talked to you, we had quite a few people talk to us as well, and just taking into consideration, you know, trying to consider those who have served on our list for quite some time as well. Also, within the city limits, significantly reduce the list, which is a goal. I'm not sure that it didn't reduce it too much to provide the services we need, but, but I cannot, I cannot predict that accurately until we would see what happens. So our thought process was if we expanded it the point five miles, we are allowing for a couple of other businesses that are currently on our list to qualify to remain on the list, while minimizing the number dramatically, keeps it under ten still, and they are still close enough that we can monitor, and our citizens, the expectation of closeness is still there.
I just want to thank the Police Department for putting this together, and I'm not going to pick it apart. Whatever you all think is appropriate, that's, you know, that's, that's, you all do it every day. The only thing I don't like about it is that point five radius, only because when I think of an ordinance, I think of the standard of practice when doing business inside the city. And I feel like we don't have any jurisdiction outside the city limits. So knowing that, I, I just don't feel like, if we're going to do it, just make it within the city, and then, you know, you know, what's the enforcement for tho- those outside the city? You know? How, how does that actually look to, to make them abide by ordinance, even though our jurisdiction technically is only within the city limits?
Michael's brought it out a couple of times, that the ones that are in the city, you know, are paying the city taxes on their vehicles, if their trucks are registered in the city, and their place of business, and the ones outside are not. And I guess when you think of a city, then, you know, I know other companies come in and do other particular lines of work, too. So I know y'all have worked hard on this, and I know that it's been very difficult over the years with, you know, getting it all handled and getting it situated, and I know if you've got two people, it's hard to please both, so I can imagine what lines you go through with trying to please ten to seventeen companies, you know? So anyway, I do appreciate all the time that y'all have spent on it, even though I might be asking questions, I still appreciate.
No, please do. No, please ask questions, we're happy to answer.
And the only thing that I thought of, too, was if the other ordinance, if the old ordinance had them operating in the city, how did we end up with several outside the city, based on the ordinance?
So I don't think the current ordinance requires the, it doesn't require the primary business location to be in the city. If, if it used to, I wasn't here for that. At some point, it must have changed. The lot location is the only thing that our current ordinance requires to be within the city.
Okay, I, I probably read it long ago, I was just reading, if I read it correctly, that it was required to be in the city, at that, city limits at that time, so.
So what if there's a really, if there's a larger tow company, and they're located in city X, Y, Z, but they want to put an operation in Greer? How does that affect, then, will, will they be able to get on the list because their primary location is not in the city, it's in city X, Y, Z?
Not unless they had a place in the city from which they do all of their businesses, to which their trucks are registered. What you're describing is what we currently have, which causes the problems, which causes problems. So if that larger company wanted on our rotation, then they would need to have a primary business location here, they would need to have trucks registered here, they would need to have their business license here. And they can, to be on our rotation, of course, they can tow cars if they have a business license, but they just, you know, wouldn't be on our rotation.
In the cap of the, as the ordinance is being adjusted, the cap is set at ten now?
Yes. There, it's set at ten with, with room for the chief to make discretionary decisions in the event that we grow exponentially, or we decide that ten is not enough to satisfy the amount of work that happens in two years from now, without having to come before council and do this again. But our goal, that's where we want to cap it, that we feel like that will be manageable. There's too many right now. And like you guys have heard, I mean, it's back and forth constantly. And part of that is the way the ordinance is written, and part of that is because there's so many, and I just can't, there's too, there's too much regulation for me to do, to do it right.
I think I was listening to what Jay was saying, and I had a conversation with Chief Hamby today.
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of in the same vein, he was going down and thinking about, you know, we're making these decisions based on the way the companies are currently set up. And, yeah, I just wonder if, if we didn't determine what the standard level of service was that we expected, kind of like when we put out bid for construction projects, you know, these are our expectations, this is what we're looking for, this is, this is the amount of responsiveness that you're going to have to have, these are the amount of calls that you're going to have to go on. I think they would build their business differently, you know, with the, with being on a seventeen-truck rotation, and even cutting it to ten, they just don't have the volume to dedicate, you know, a, a high level of service to us, and that's probably why when we're making calls, there's not, there's, they're skipping rotation, or you're not returning calls, or, or can't get back, or there's frustration, maybe the, the roadside's not turned over fast enough, you know? I don't, I don't know exactly what you're dealing with, but my point is that if the businesses could be adjusted, and, and they could provide a higher level of service, and let's say there were, there were less businesses, let's say we could get it done with three towing companies, or four, or five, or whatever that number is, then they would build up their fleet and their manpower to have enough to go out and handle the service. I, I would see it kind of moving in, in that direction. Did, did we consider anything like that, or?
We, we looked at Greenville, they're the only local comparable, I guess, organization that does that, and obviously, they're, they're much bigger than us. The process there, for me, would be cumbersome. If I, and I've never, in my capacity, put any huge projects out for bid, but wouldn't that be a recurring process every year? Would not, we be required to rebid these, these contracts? And for me, that's, that sounds sort of cumbersome. And then I feel like we can move that direction. I'm not sure that any of the, the businesses, and maybe one or two, I'm not sure, have that capacity at this point. I do know that most of them tow for Highway Patrol, multiple other municipalities, the counties, so they are on a bunch of different government wrecker lists, so I'm not sure that they, they would have to dump that, build their business to be able to handle. I mean, because we, there's days where we're towing three and four cars within an hour, and then there's days that we tow three or four total, you know? I don't know. That would require a pretty good-sized fleet to be able to handle, handle that. And usually, and I know Greenville does, they used to do a week at a time, or two weeks at a time, per wrecker, so they would have to be twenty-four, seven for that entire seven-day period. I don't know that we're there yet. I'm not opposed to moving that direction, I just, I don't think right now that's feasible.
Okay. I mean, I, I agree, I mean, I think, because as they're currently set up, obviously, you're having challenges. I mean, that's, I think that's the intent of the ordinance, you don't, the seventeen is, like you described it as cumbersome.
Right.
And, and it's, and it can be kind of challenging to, to order seventeen different towing companies, and I, and I understand where you're coming from, and I, I do think it's obviously a step in the right direction to try to reduce the number, but. It's kind of like, you know, Ace Environmental handles our trash service, and I brought that up with Chief today. And it's very different type of service, though, in that, you know, if somebody misses a can, or they leave a brush pile out or something like that, well, we can put that off for a day or two to go out and pick that up, and that's fine, but there's a sense of urgency in, in this situation, and so there has to be a, a certain level of responsiveness and seriousness with this commitment to be on that rotation, and I, and I get that. So it's, it's a little different, but we can figure out what that standard is, and we can enter into a long-term contract to where it would be advantageous for a towing company, and it might not be for a year, might be for two or three years. And so they would rebuild their business accordingly, or they wouldn't bid for it if they didn't want to.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
I can appreciate and understand that. If that's the direction council would choose for us to go, then obviously, then we would research that. I would, I am not knowledgeable enough to, to say that that's something we could do right now. I, I would do the research and try to figure it out, if that's the direction you guys think is best.
Council, this is second and final reading of ordinance number thirty dash twenty twenty-two. Do note that Section E of the ordinance, under the second session, section, was amended at first reading to include the half-mile radius. Others?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to make a motion for the grandfather clause.
Okay. Ms. Albert makes a motion to include, um, okay, hold on one second. Ms. Blackwell, can you help me with where?
Hang on, Mr. Mayor.
It is Section ninety-four dash one fifty-three, as amended, A. And. It's towards, it's on page, I don't know if you guys have pages numbered in the digital version, it's page twelve, it's the second to last page, almost at the end.
Ninety-four one?
Ninety-four one fifty-three, sir, it's Section A. It says if more than one wrecker business is at one location and owned by the same person, they shall be considered as one business. For the purpose of the rotation, this subsection shall not apply to any business on the rotation list prior to March one of nineteen ninety-nine. This is the stricken language in the new ordinance. And I, if I heard Ms. Albert correctly, her intent would be to include in the new ordinance that any business on the rotation list prior to March first nineteen ninety-nine be included in this new ordinance. Is that correct?
And this affects how many businesses, Ms. Black?
Just one.
One.
Just one.
You want to add anything if I might? Well, I guess we need to finish that.
We have a mo-, yeah, a motion on the floor to, to not strike or add Article A of Section ninety-four one fifty-three. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Floor's open for discussion.
Do we have any idea why that language was applied to begin with?
I was not here at that time.
I think Ms. Blackwell was in middle school. But.
Not quite, but close.
It, it was way, that, that business owners, tow truck operators, at the time, could expand their business when they had, when they had the opportunity. It was just working within the confines of the ordinance, and so opportunity came along, business owners took the opportunity. So therefore, that's why that was in there, not to derail their, their plans.
Well, in this scenario, I mean, this, this impacts one business, I mean, essentially. So if we left that, if we left the grandfather clause in place, it would only allow that business to be, to, you know, to hold that, that place. Is that indefinitely? I mean, if the business is sold, or we don't really even deal with that?
I don't know.
And then when it's grandfathered, it would refer to the one, the company, was that might be right?
There's a, there's a language in here, if I may, under one fifty-three, on one fifty-three, the new Section A, it said should a business on the wrecker rotation list be sold, the new owner may maintain the service on the rotation list. In the case, by grandfathering in this particular business, what you've done is you've got a one business owner ordering two different wrecker companies. If that one business owner were to sell one of those wrecker companies, that person who bought the wrecker company would be able to remain on the list. Therefore, making this clause prior to nineteen ninety-one worthless in the ordinance, because no one would, there would be no one left that would qualify.
And in this case, if we, so, in, the, the way the existing ordinance is written, there's seventeen on the, on the list?
Currently, sixteen, one just recently removed themselves. So we're down to, we're at sixteen, and have been for a couple of months. Well, yeah, a couple of months.
Trying to get to Tina, is that right?
At the most.
That would be the.
More manageable. And, and it's not just a reduction in numbers, there are also quite a few changes within the ordinance that close loopholes, and just button it up and tidy it up to make it much easier to watch and enforce. It's not simply a reduction in numbers, but that will help a lot, in my view.
But reducing it to ten will, should increase the volume for that towing company, regardless if it's one or two.
Yes.
I mean, I know it's two now, but out of two out of sixteen versus one out of ten?
Yes.
Or up to ten?
Yeah, they, they will get more turns by reducing it, they will tow more cars for us by reducing the number to ten.
Council, we've, we've got a motion and a second on the floor for an amendment. The amendment is to strike the, it's to add Section A, which was stricken from Section ninety-four one fifty-three. Further conversation in that regard, discussion, questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Innerwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
No.
Council, we'll move to second reading, well, no, we've got to go finish on the, we have the ordinance now, well, that was to, that was to vote on, excuse me, that was to vote on the motion. Now, it comes before us for a vote. Section ninety-four one fifty-three, Section A, would be added back to the wrecker ordinance, also amended as shown in Section ninety-four one forty-seven, the place of business within the city being extended to a one-half-mile radius. That comes before us at this point. The floor was open for discussion.
Yes, sir, now, right now, we're back on an amended ordinance, and this is the, your, this is the question on the, the ordinance as amended.
On the ordinance as amended.
Yes, sir.
So we've got a motion and a second in regards to, or we need a new motion and a second on the amended.
No, you, you've got a motion and a second on the, on the question. Yes, sir.
Okay, motion and a second on the amended, floor's open for discussion. For those two amendments, in.
I, I have one other thing I wanted to ask you, sorry, about all of the wreckers that are on the rotation list, are they all required to have the capabilities to, I know it was brought up about motorcycles and mopeds and different things like that, so are each of them required to have the facilities to pick up the moped, the motorcycles, the trucks, the cars, what have you, the equipment tie-down or whatever, that's on our list? Is that, because I know you said you call sometimes, and it seems like nobody wants to go pick up a moped, nobody wants to pick up a motorcycle, whatever.
Yes, they're required to have the equipment to do that.
Which amendments are included in this?
The amendments, Mr. Dumas, are included, are the one Ms. Albert just made, specific to those grandfathered in before nineteen ninety-nine, and then the one specific to the half-mile radius was actually amended at first reading, so this is what you've got at second reading. So those are the two amendments in this, in this ordinance. So that has not been removed.
What part was amended?
It wouldn't, it. It wouldn't, at first reading, the half-mile was included. Yeah, it was accepted at first, yes, ma'am.
So this amendment, we're scratching the half-mile?
You would need a separate amendment to do that.
No, you'd have to have a separate amendment.
Okay, so this is just specific to the grandfather clause?
That's already passed.
Yes, right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm confused. So we're, we're about to vote on the amendment?
You're, you're, that's already been done. So what you, what you will be voting on now is an amended ordinance specific to the amendment with the half-mile first reading and then Ms. Albert's recent amendment. So we're back to the ordinance.
Half-mile requirement. I'll just say, you know, I, I understand the question about the half-mile radius. The city, I know we use vendors in all kinds of different capacities that aren't located within the city, and so I don't necessarily have a problem if we say, you know, looking at capacity and we feel like that would give us a sweet spot where we are right now and where we're going from a capacity standpoint. You know, I don't think, I don't think everybody needs to be within the city necessarily to be within the spirit of what we do as an organization overall with vendors and, and otherwise that way. So, you know, my, my primary concern isn't, is someone paying, are we getting a cut of their taxes on their truck? It's, is it manageable for staff and how does that impact the quality of service for the folks who, who we're serving, right? So if staff is saying that this is the sweet spot for that, again, we don't, we don't require every vendor to be located within the city in other ways, so I'm not a problem with this here.
Well, just, we'll mark down on first reading, adding the half-mile radius. It, it kind of seems like we're, we're striking one portion of ordinance saying, well, you can't have your business located at your lot, your storage lot, although that's in the city. You, you have to have your primary business there if you want to be in the city. But now, because apparently there's operators who primary is out in the city, but they use their storage lot as their business address, and that's how they qualify. But if we are saying, well, now, you don't have to, your primary business does not have to be in the city. You can be half-mile out. I mean, we're just kind of doing a shell game, aren't we?
What would be nice is to, is to create some type of advantage for being in the city. Maybe you get twice on the call sheet if you're in the city, you know?
I, I think there's, as I said before, I think there's a lot of avenues, but I don't think it's contained here.
I don't know, do we do that? Do we make those considerations with other vendors in other areas and other departments? I don't think we do. I think, I think our consideration is providing the service to our, our customers as efficiently as, as possible and as cost-effectively as possible.
But we do, for vendors outside our city, excuse me, we give, yes, when we submit a request for proposals, in many instances, vendors inside our city get a, we reevaluate that, we, we reduce their so-called?
There's a local preference in the procurement code that allows for that, depending on what it is, a percentage?
Right.
For the local preference.
Yeah, so we do, we, we do that. We give, we give preference to folks.
For procurement, here, sir.
For procurement, for certain things, non-professional services. So when I say non-professional services, architects, engineering, that kind of stuff is not, does not get a?
My point is, it's not a rule across the board. This isn't something like, you know?
No, I, I understand, and I guess my overarching concern is that it's a regulated business and?
From what, from what I'm hearing from staff is the situation has devolved to the point where it's next to impossible to manage for staff. It's a mess for our, you know, the people we're providing the services for. Obviously, the providers of the service, there's fussing and there's some, some bad feelings in that community as well. What I'm hearing from staff is we need to draw a line in the sand, figure out what's going to be manageable for us to provide quality service, cost-effectively, as easily and efficiently as possible for staff.
And, and what you're saying is correct, but it's, this is not a new issue. This has been going on since this, since we've had a wrecker ordinance, and the ordinance has, it's, it's been tweaked and changed over time. The results are the same. That's why I'm saying that not, you know, this may work for a short period of time, but we'll be back at this crossroads again.
And I think we'll be back there because we seem to think we know a whole lot more about this wrecker business than our staff does. We're spending a whole lot more time and energy than we did on passing the forty million-dollar budget, and we got a recommendation from staff, and we're sitting here picking this thing apart. It's our responsibility as a regulated business to address these issues, but I don't know that any of us have the expertise to do this. Now, we can take the expertise from the input on this, but I'm not exactly sure, and it's already passed now at this point, that something that we, that we considered twenty years ago to make sure that we would have enough people in place to, to take care of something is appropriate even today. So I, I just don't know why we, we seem to think that this is, this is not something we're involved in on an everyday basis, and they are. And we're just sitting here making it more difficult for them in terms of what we think needs to be taking place on this. I'm not sure exactly why we're, we're at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you, sir. We have an amended motion on the floor that requires, that has, contains two amendments to the original ordinance. Those are in section two dash A. Wrecker service requesting to be on the rotation list must physically have a place of business within one half-mile radius of the incorporated city limits. The other is in one, is in section one fifty, is in section ninety-four, one fifty-three.
A.
A, which we are going to replace or put back in the grandfather clause that was stricken. Those are the two amendments to this item. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Motion by?
Mr. Bettis.
Bettis and a second, by?
Mr. Booker.
Mr. Booker.
Mr. Booker. Any further questions or discussions before we vote at this point? The question has been called. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to the second item before us this evening, which is the second and final reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Kimberly Whitlock, located at three oh five Pine Street from R-12 Single Family Residential to D-R-D. Ms. Cotty joins us for that conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have any updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. I am changing from paper back to computer here. This comes as second reading. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
May I just re, we'll reiterate what I said last time about we probably need to have some clear-cut ordinances covering this particular type of situation.
I think we'll see some of that in the UDO. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Next item before us is second and final reading of ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Upstate House Projects LLC, located on Highland Avenue from R-1 to R-5. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in that regard?
No.
Floor is open. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
All right.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, fourth item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to remove the City of Greer Gateway International Business Center overlay district established by Article Five, Section five fifteen of the City of Greer zoning ordinances from the City of Greer zoning map. Had information in that regard at our last meeting. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, happy to answer any questions, though.
I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, the second and final reading of ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Column GSP zero eight one LP, located on Brookshire Road and Highway one oh one South, I-1 to S-1. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in that regard?
No updates.
With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance number forty dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer downtown overlay district zoning map established by Article Five, Section five eighteen of the City of Greer zoning ordinances by removing a certain piece of property identified herein from the City of Greer overlay district. Any new or additional information in that regard, Ms. Cotty?
No, just to note that it, the ordinance has been updated per first reading, the change to just have the one property.
Great. With that information, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. The floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance forty-one dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer highway transition overlay district zoning map established by Article Five, Section five sixteen of the City of Greer zoning ordinances, and to add the properties identified herein to the highway transitional overlay district. Any new or additional information, Ms. Cotty?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council will move to items in the new business section, first of which is the bid summary for the Benson Automotive Kids Planet landscaping. Landscaping was identified as a need in our initial plans for renovations to the Kids You've got the description here as to why we need to address the landscaping issues, and Mr. Guggenauer joins us for a overview of that and a recommendation in regards to landscaping. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. As you know the property very well, I'm sure, the park over there at Benson Kids Planet, the kids have worn that ground down pretty well, and Parks and Recreation has come to the point where we're, they're ready to sod that entire area and do some landscaping to kind of stabilize that. And it's also on a slope, which adds to our issues over there as the torrential downpours push our, what we do have over there, if they try to seed, it's just, it's time to resod it, in their opinion. So we did hold a mandatory pre-bid for this project. We had a sole bidder who would like to do this for fifty thou, fifty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars, forty-four cents. That's Dreamscape landscaping. We do have experience with them. They're a very good contractor, and they're out of Woodruff, South Carolina. The funds for this project will be coming out of the Parks and Recreation budget under their renovations, and I have, I can answer any questions here to do it, but staff recommends that we proceed to this if you see fit.
Council, I saw the recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
I think this will really step it, I, I'm by there every day several times, and, you know, it's, red mud kills me. So I think it's, it will, it's really gonna make it look good.
Mr. Guggenauer, how long will this section be out of use to allow the sod to establish and, and that sort of thing? Because to Jay's point, I know if you go by there on any Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, there are hundreds, hundreds of kids out there.
Well, the plan, Mayor, is to do this in the fall, after the kids get back to school. So we're not going to be doing this at our peak season. And Dreamscape has said that they can do this in phases to maybe not shut down the entire park. So that's their plan to accomplish, getting this done is, is to break it up and try not, try to, my understanding that they're not going to shut it all down one time. They're going to do this in stages, just for that very reason.
And just off the top of your head, how many thousand square feet is this we're, we're looking at?
Yeah, they're going to be doing thirty-three thousand square, three hundred square feet. So pretty much that entire section down to the slot.
Okay.
Will that, the rubber surface that's become discolored by the red clay, will that come clean?
Uh, I, sir, I don't know. It, it's, to take it back to original state, probably not going to happen, but after we do stabilize and get some of that, you're, you know, that runoff taken care of, then we can come back and try to do the best we can to clean it up. But yeah, I doubt if we'll ever get that total red stain out of there. It's, it's substantial.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Stay with us, sir. We've got, second item tonight is another bid summary regarding Century Park. It's, involves the ball field and a culvert repair. Mr. Guggenauer, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This one creeped up, it's, there was a collapse. If, if you know where the location is, the ball field, it sits right below Kids Planet, but number one. The culvert has collapsed at some point, and it was diverting itself, the flow of that stream underneath the ball, which runs all the way across the ball field, and, and it has slowly eroded outside the culvert, or the pipe that was in there. Now, with these last few torrential downpours, it's even gotten worse. I mean, it's become a safety hazard at this point. It's crept back underneath the, the fencing. So we'd like to hop on this as quickly as we can, just maybe as a safety issue concern. We did a mandatory, mandatory pre-bid for this as well, and we had one bidder, sole bidder, give us a price. for this as well, and we had one bidder, sole bidder, give us a price. They're wanting to do it for eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the reason it is that much is because we're also going to try to enlarge that pipe as well while we're at it. And my understanding is going with the polycropleene piping for that versus the galvanized steel is a little more expensive, and it upsized and it added charge to that as well. So, but we believe this is a permanent fix.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And the second floor is open for discussion.
That is the, that piping, it's taking the water from the spring, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
And then it dumps it into the creek?
Yes, sir. All the way across underneath the field.
Right.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, item three is professional services for phase two of one thirteen Berry Avenue. With phase one renovation of the offices at one thirteen Berry Avenue, staff would like to advance with obtaining professional services for the remaining portion of the building that the city would manage and occupy. Mr. Guggenauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, as you know, we purchased this building, and our current plan is to have Greer Relief occupy about two-thirds of this structure. Engineering is now about to move in to the former offices of Cuttingham Waters, which we're really not doing anything other than we've done an substantial, a pretty substantial outfit to the existing strip. We haven't built a whole lot of carpeting, painting, and doing the cosmetics to bring it up to using, being able to use it. But that leaves us a good eleven thousand to twelve thousand square foot that the city then can utilize for some other purpose. That purpose has not yet been determined, and one of the reasons we're seeking professional services for this is to go in and do that programming, do that planning, come up with the best usage for staff and for the city with that space. It's, there've been, there's a lot of uses it could take. It could be utilized for some IT space, which they're lacking. GIS, as I mentioned, Archives will likely go out there and get out of the OC. There's just a whole host of things we can utilize that space for. But we're asking for the professional services to come in and do that design.
It's a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to item four this evening. Thank you, sir. Let's move to item four this evening, which is the first reading of Ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Peggy Henson located at nine forty-five Brockman McClyman Road from RS Residential Suburban to I one. Ms. Cotty joins us for that conversation. Ms. Cotty, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you. Again, this is a rezoning request that others have spoken on earlier this evening. For the sake of this conversation, we have put it as one case for ordinance numbers thirty-three through thirty-seven. And this is an aerial view of the property. There are five pieces in question. Again, this is at the corner of Brockman McClyman and Abner Creek Road. It's about twenty acres total. So this is kind of a closer view of the ordinances. Just because of different ownership, we have to take them as separate ordinances, but they're all very similar in request and for one project overall, which is the expansion of Global Commerce Park. So as you can see, the large parcel is Ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two, which is what we're opening right now. And then the other parcels are the four smaller one acre, one acre parcels that line Brockman McClyman. So you can see there's thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. So I just wanted to give a closer look at the five different cases. But again, we're going to kind of talk about them as one, and then you can ask questions, or we can take them for vote separately. Here's the current zoning map. Again, it is zoned currently RS. The blue that you see is I one Industrial. The light blue that you see is S one Services District, and then the gold is a combination of R seven five and then DRD, which is Design Review District. This is the future land use map. It is designated as Employment Center. This is a current street view from Abner Creek Road, and then this is a street view from Brockman McClyman across from, again, the fire station. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing earlier this month and recommended approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
I've heard several people say it would be warehouses, and it seems like I've heard somebody saying, maybe I read it in an email, about parking lot for employees. So I'm just wondering what will actually be there.
Um, I, go ahead.
Yeah, let me jump in real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you for reminding, Ms. Albert, reminding me. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Okay, thank you. If y'all stand by, you may be able to help us with some of this discussion. So, all right, proceed if you'd like to, or we can defer to...
Yeah, we can certainly have the applicant, the developer, address that. I do believe they're just talking about the parking lot that would be for the warehouse. They were talking about the location of it and where they're planning to put it. At this point, this is just a rezoning request. So we've seen kind of ideas of layouts, but staff has not seen a submitted site plan for what would be on the site. It's just for the use. But they definitely referenced that earlier, and every use, whether it's a warehouse or even a gas station or something of that nature, still has to have parking spaces. So that they were just referring to the parking for the use, which I do believe is manufacturing and warehouse, similar to the existing Global Commerce Park. So they do currently have two buildings built out there, and then they're currently grading their phase three, which is for, or phase two, I'm sorry, and that is three buildings. And then this would be an additional expansion if it were to be approved.
The buildings you're talking about are already on their property?
The, the pieces to the north that are, that are zoned I one, the big blue to the north, up near, up near the top of the property, there's two that are in existence already.
Mr. Cawthorn, I identify at the first reading an opportunity for those that are owners or representatives of the owners to address counsel. I will afford you and/or your team the opportunity to do that if you would like to do so at this point, because I think there's probably going to be a number of questions that you may get addressed for us right here at the front of the discussion that may be beneficial.
At the podium, please, sir. Yes.
Bring in Chip with the...
That'd be fine.
So, a couple of things.
If you'll come to the podium, please.
Over to the podium, okay.
So we can record it.
Let me, I'm gonna, so what I was referring to is we have buildings with, so they're sort of, you know, we're not gigantic tenants out there. I mean, our tenants are like fifty thousand, thirty thousand, twenty thousand in multiple tenant buildings. We have two buildings right now. We're grading three more. We're in the dark blue area there that joins the light green area, which is the subject property. And so the two additional built, two buildings we're building now, they share a truck court. So the truck courts, you know, a hundred and ninety-five feet. There's the back of a building, the back of a building. They run long ways across, so the short ends of the buildings are against the residential neighborhood that's adjacent there. So it's a blank end. Because of the grades, we're probably, you know, we're twenty-five feet off the property line with any grading, and then we're probably another eighty or ninety feet away from the subdivision. So there would be, you know, a slope and a buffer, and it would be a non-working end of the building. It's a blank, a blank end of a warehouse. So the truck court's in the center, so it'd be the short end of the truck court. And then in front of each building, you know, they're what they call single loaded buildings, so the car parking's in front. Okay? So the car parking, car parking, building, then truck court. So we'd have the exact same proposed that we got this, the same layout for the green piece. So the car parking lot for the employees would be against Abner Creek but not have a curb cut. So it would feed in a existing road, it would feed the property from the current entrance, which is on Brockman McClyman. And then we've talked to DOT about doing a, another entrance down near the fire station because of site distances and whatever, and so this would sort of give us a loop. And again, I understand the concerns about Abner Creek Road, but I think even now trucks don't want to drive down Abner Creek. I don't, I don't really see them choosing to do that. I mean, I think you've got an interchange right there. We have BMW suppliers in each building we've done so far. You know, they just drive over the bridge, go to BMW, do what they're doing, turn around, come back. And, and of course, there's, the attraction of Global Commerce is the interchange there, not, you know, driving down these other roads. And should they need to not, because eighty-five's not good, should they need to do something else, there's plenty of options to go over Brockman McClyman, get on one oh one, hit eighty, go down, you know, some larger roads. So I don't think, if you, if you made the mistake of going down Abner Creek Road one time in an eighteen-wheel truck, I don't think you'd try to do it again. I'm just, now, I can't ever say that what's going to happen, but I think, I think that's what we're looking at. And then I think DOT, you know, they generally, I'm sure they might come at some, some, some street improvements, turning lanes and things like that. They've, they've kind of mentioned we might have to do something like that. So whatever, and they're both DOT streets, roads. I believe that's correct. So, you know, we can't do anything that they won't let us to. I mean, you know, they have to say you can have a curb cut. They have to, they've already, I think in the meeting, Chip, Chip doesn't really remember it this way, but I think they pretty much said, I don't see how you're going to get anything on Abner Creek Road. And we said, well, we're not really asking for anything on Abner Creek Road. We're going to feed it internally. So I don't know if that was way more than you were asking, or, you know.
That's the traffic study I mentioned.
But that's the traffic study we're doing. And I think you were specifically asking about the parking lot. And the only thing I would want to be clear about that on Abner Creek is that it's a car parking lot. So it's just...
Not exit, yeah.
Right. It's just, it's not truck, it's not trucks. It's just cars. So it's, you know, a, a double wide sixty, you know, sixty-four foot wide parking aisle with ninety-degree parking on each side. Just, just exactly what we have out there right now.
Exactly what you have there?
Out there right now.
Mr. Cawthorn, should these ordinances pass, do you foresee that we would have the traffic study and some type of proposed buffering and layout of this property?
Well, we could certainly accommodate those, those wishes. Like I said, there is a, there is a, there is a separation. It is a blank wall. There's a slope. It has to have something growing on it. And so, you know, there would be vegetation in between the adjacent subdivision and in the front. You know, we're open to ideas on that. But again, it's just, it's the front of the, the buildings are really going to all be very similar, is our, is our current plan. And so really, the buildings we have out there and the buildings we're getting ready to build, they, they're really all the same type of construction. They're all, you know, so far, they're all the same color. They've got the same awnings. They're all landscaped similarly. So, you know...
What I'm getting at is that those things that I've asked about would demonstrate the minimal impact to the community.
Right.
I think that's what we want to see.
Let me mention one thing about the buffer.
And I'd like to see that before second reading.
Well, again, we haven't submitted any plans on this. We have an overall master plan, but our plan shows a buffer on Abner Creek Road. But the other thing I wanted to mention, the, we'll meet the Greer landscape ordinance in the parking lot also. I mean, the parking lot would have, without any buffer, there's a landscape of ordinance that would be on that parking lot that Mark was describing. And then the buffer we're talking about would be behind the parking lot between Abner Creek Road and the parking lot.
But we'd be happy to show you anything you think would be helpful. I think it's going to be a fairly attractive project in a very benign use compared to, say, even doing something like any other residential use over there. I mean, a shopping center would certainly have a lot more traffic. There'd be a lot of ins and outs. I mean, I think we're, we're controlling the traffic. I think more than likely, if history serves as any guide, there'd probably be street improvements to Brockman McClyman required by us at our expense on Brockman McClyman for turning lanes and things like that. And, you know, usually, they like to get their bite at the apple, you know, if somebody's doing something over there. So it's, I think it would be, again, blank ends of the buildings towards the existing subdivision, and our front facade, which is our, you know, our most aesthetically pleasing look, could be facing the other neighborhood in Abner Creek Road.
And what are the warehouses? Where are they going to structure it up?
Uh, they're tilt-up concrete, painted.
Concrete, yes.
Yeah, taped, yeah, tilt-up. So generally, twenty-eight foot clear, and some buildings are at thirty-two foot clear.
And then after you build these and you have your business, you rent these out to other companies? Is that what it is?
That's what we do, yes. Right. So right now, we probably, in the first building, it fronts Brockman McClyman. We probably have, we have five different businesses in there. The second building, we have two. And then we just started leasing the third building.
Is there any particular line of business that they generally are, or?
Well, we have, like I said, we had two BMW suppliers, smaller guys. We have, in the last building we just did, we had a BMW guy and a athletic distributor of athletic exercise equipment. We've got a box company that does corrugated packaging, a keg distributor, which I didn't know there was such a thing, but there, there is, that distributes kegs to restaurants and recycles them, and then takes them back to the brewery. And so it's, it's very, actually, the, the parking lots, if you go out there, are not full. So even the car parking lots, you get an idea of the number of employees. It's just a, you know, it's just not a high, you know, the office space is six hundred to seven hundred square feet, and, you know, it's just not a lot of people. Not saying that some people couldn't have more, but generally, you just don't see a lot of office build out in this type of warehouses.
Believe it was Mr. Fogelman, you mentioned something about two thousand and sixteen. Can you give me a little bit of context? I should know, perhaps, how things have unfolded, the development of Global Commerce Park.
Okay, so the part closest to I eighty-five and Brockman McClyman, it butts the frontage road. We bought that. That was the old Greer Industrial Park. That was Ryan Steakhouse developed that. They had one building down at the bottom of the hill, which I believe is a metal building that was doing some recycling, and that was it. So we bought that piece, and then we bought the back piece of another piece of property Mr. Daley owned that had been for sale.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. That was approximately when? What year did that, did that start?
Two thousand and sixteen was when I know we started working on it.
Was when you...
Planning with the city and design, and then construction following the building.
Right. I can't remember whether we had it under contract before that, then got them, or got them about the same time.
Okay.
We, we, so, yeah, so two thousand and sixteen, and we then, at that time, we approached City of Greer. We didn't have sewer. So we, see, we worked with us to get the sewer up the creek there. We bought Mr. Daley's piece, which is about thirty-eight acres. So that gave us about sixty-eight acres. We bought another six acres down there at the bottom of the hill that was in front of the little metal building from, that was in part of the Greer Park from the, one of the owners. And then we rerouted Clear Springs and left the name the same, but made it go to the frontage road. So the metal building, which was sort of, you know, older and maybe needs a little something done to it, we just got it on its own road, so it's not coming through the park. They're still in the park.
On the access road.
Yeah, on the access road. So we renamed the old Clear Springs on Brockman McClyman. We named that Global Drive, I think, Court. think, Court. And so the first building, we started in, when we started the first building?
I think sixteen, seventeen.
No, no, well, that was, that was, we started that building maybe in eighteen, two thousand eighteen or nineteen. Started the second building last year, third building this year. Hope to be in the dry on the third building by this, by this winter. And so, you know, it's been well received, we're happy, we, we, we're doing some, you know, with this additional land, we, if you go out there, you can see, we kind of got the main road, it's kind of like a greenway, we got landscape and a curved path, there's going to be some passive amenities out there for the employees, you know, walking trails, there's a lake down there that's down by the Frontage Road. And so we got, sent us the plans to do some, you know, green space and, and some activity areas for, for the actual tenants.
Scotty, what, what year was Overton subdivision approved about?
It was rezoned in two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, okay. Others of either Mr. Fogelman or Mr. Cothran?
Pardon me?
I was just asking for other questions.
Could you, could you repeat the, because one of the questions was the transition of intensity between, you know, industrial to residential? What's the building height? I know you said it once, but can you say it again, building height?
Yeah, it's, the interior clear height is twenty-eight feet on the buildings we have and the one we're getting ready to start is thirty-two feet. So the parapet might be, well, it's probably, probably about that same height, it might be thirty-three feet high instead of thirty-two, you know, in thirty-two feet clear or something like, well, it'd probably be higher than that because of the truss. So maybe, maybe thirty-four feet high. And again, it'd be eighty, eighty to ninety feet away from the property line with a grade differential.
Others? Gentlemen, we appreciate that information. If we have other questions, we'll ask.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody from your team to address it. Counsel, floor is open for discussion at this point. You want to follow up on anything? I know we had one question, is there anything else?
Um, if there were any questions that you didn't get answered, I'm happy to address them. I did want to just follow up that the setback in I one is forty-five feet, so no building could be closer than forty-five feet to either Abner Creek Road or Brockman McCliman. We also do have a roadside buffer for any parking lots, so there would be an eight-foot vegetated landscape buffer between any parking and any roadway, whether that be Abner Creek, Brockman McCliman, or both. But I'm happy to answer anything else you have.
Scotty, remind me on the Overton subdivision that I believe came with a recommendation from denial from staff, is that correct?
Planning staff did recommend denial. Planning commission voted for three for approval and then council voted to approve.
And remind me again, was that piece of property zoned as C three?
It was.
When it was considered?
Yes.
Was that because of a prior use?
Um, I am not certain. But yes, it was rezoned from C three to R seven five for the Overton Park Development.
So help me understand a little bit about that. I know you were not here at that point in time, but C three is traditionally highway commercial, is that not true?
Yes, it's, it's the most intense of our commercial uses.
And it could have been under our zoning at that point in time, anything basically, is that true?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, as you can see from our future land use map, that didn't really change when it was voted on in two thousand twenty. Abner Creek Road was kind of the dividing line, anything north of that up to eighty-five was seen for higher intensity uses. And then that road kind of served as the cutoff to higher intensity to lower intensity. So I'm assuming that's why staff recommended denial. There wasn't a lot of detail in staff reports, but that it was, that the Overton wasn't necessarily consistent with the future land use map.
Ms. Scotty, how long have these properties been RS?
Um, I'm not certain. I believe since they were brought in in the nineties.
Is it fair to say that the recommendation for approval from staff was the foundation of that is the future land use map?
Yes, that is our primary tool. It's not the only decision-making tool that we use, but certainly the future land use map and comprehensive plan is the primary thing that we look at. So staff did recommend approval.
As I look at the maps and listen to the conversations tonight, folks who took their time to come out and speak, there was about ten items that I wrote down. And half of those had to do with roads and traffic being, you know, the major concern, some of the major concerns, or half of them that I wrote down, were safety of the roads and not being able to, just too much traffic. And the, you know, if it passes the way it, the ordinance is written, the vehicle usage would be much less than, than if it, if it developed as residential. I don't want to put words into anyone's mouth, but when all of this began, there was a lot of telephone calls and emails and the, it was always traffic, traffic, traffic. And then as you spoke to them, then they, the, then it got to be, no, well, now it's issues regarding property values. And I understand all those are legitimate. I'm just not sure that, no, no matter our decision tonight and then at the second final reading, I don't think the majority of the folks in that area will be happy. Based on my conversations I've had over time with folks and then during this, during this particular rezoning. I will say that, that although Abner Creek is, you know, not the best and neither is Brockman McCliman, it would not be in that shape today if it were not for the development because it, they are state roads in the states, the state does not go and develop and improve roadways without development.
Mr. Arrowhead, I've had the opportunity, as you know, this is District Three, have the privilege of serving the residents in this area. Had a lot of opportunity over the last couple of months to spend time over there, several meetings with constituents in the area. And I'm, I'm not actually here on this particular item, I'm not hearing concerns about the volume of traffic. In fact, I'm hearing over and over and over and over, we know this is going to develop, we know that's not going to be able to be stopped, we want these people to be able to benefit from their property, but what I'm hearing over and over is the nature of the traffic, but more importantly, the nature of the way the area has developed overall over the last couple of years. Don't need to share with any of you what's happened over the last eighteen to twenty-four months. And I think obviously there's some uncertainty and uncertainty, there's questions that come and understandably, our neighbors just want to make sure we're getting this right and developing this. Understand the recommendation from staff and from planning commissions based on our future land use map, but the reality is, the last eighteen, twenty-four months, we have a lot of residential that's gone up, even, even making the exception that we did make to the future land use map. And so, you know, that's why, when I look at this, I see on three sides, this particular proposal is surrounded currently, it's surrounded by residential areas, two of which are already in the city, one of which, you know, is not, not in the city, but it is very clearly residential, you know, across, we, I believe we had a gentleman here that lives on that corner. And so we've got Saddle Brook, Overton, kind of Catty Corner across the, the way, we've got Feins Creek. I, I have so much appreciation for what Ms. Cothran is, is doing. You know, this is kind of the heartbeat of the economic vibrancy that we see happening in Greer, this type of, of development, industrial use, you know, serving BMW and otherwise. But the reality is, this has developed as a residential area over the last couple of years and on three sides, that's what we see very clearly. You know, I just had an anecdotally tonight shared with me, you know, coming up just very recently, a couple of, of trucks meeting on Abner Creek and having an issue and getting stuck and, and there being a, a problem there on Abner Creek. So I understand the intention wouldn't be for, there to be an entrance on Abner Creek, but I think what the residents are already experiencing is when there's an issue on eighty-five, this is already being used as an area where traffic is diverting off of interstate eighty-five and coming around trying to avoid tho- those snags. And that's not just cars, but just traffic in general that way. And so I'm very sympathetic to that. I understand we, we've got to draw a line somewhere, but we, you know, the way I'm seeing it, what, the, the way, the way the development has unfolded over the last two years or so, we've kind of, we've kind of started to see where that line is. So I, I think the vast majority of my constituents would understand this is going to be developed, but they would be much more comfortable with it being developed as residential. You know, the point was made about the volume of traffic from, you know, shopping, you know, grocery store, that may be true, but the reality is, that's an amenity to the community as well, a church, a grocery store, other shopping, those are facilities that these residents could use in that area. So for the, for these reasons, I, I can't support this request for rezoning.
I'll offer, I'll offer a bit of a counterpoint, I guess. You know, it's mentioned tonight that, that there needs to be transitional zones. And, and I'll be the first to admit that we have been short-sighted as a council by allowing some of the develop, the residential development to happen in, in the area between Abner Creek and eighty-five. That, that area is so narrow that there's going to be very little hope of any transitional businesses between eighty-five and, and Abner Creek. And so for me, I think to the west and to the north of Abner Creek, while there is residential in that area and, and we made the decision to allow it and need to protect it, inevitably, that whole area becomes industrial or service at some point in time in the future. And I think part of that's caused by the, by the addition of the new distribution and logistics warehouse that BMW has built or had built for them there on, near Freeman Farm and what we're, what we're continuing to, to see happen in that area. It's interesting, I, I found a comment from the Moore School of Business, I believe, was where it was attributed in regards to the Spartanburg area. And it says, "The logistics property sector is experiencing its largest supply wave to date. The staggering amount of new speculative space coming to this area would be cause for alarm if it was any other type of property. However, the rapid pace of construction is only exceeded by leasing activity in the sector as net absorption of logistics space reached record levels in two thousand twenty-one." I think we're going to see record growth in that area or at least requests for more industrial space and service space in, in that area. And so for me, I, I, I think Abner Creek becomes the definitive line of demarcation, so to speak, with residential back to the, to the east and into the south and north, further down into that area. It's kind of interesting and I'm not, I'm not clear, I don't remember all of this, but you know, we had, we had C three there and then we had it next to RS. So you had the highest highway commercial use that we have in the city next to one of the most restrictive residential development areas side by side at this intersection. In fact, minimum residential lot space for something in residential suburbs, three-quarters of an acre. That is, that's extraordinary for, you know, for an area like that. We, we see it maybe in, in one or two subdivisions down there, but, but, but not many. I can't imagine that there are many that have almost acre lots down there. And the other permitted uses, kind of to your point, you're right, while there, while there certainly would be amenities, the other permitted uses are country clubs, cemetery, farms, ranches, warehousing, kennels, nurseries, greenhouses, landscaping business, horse stables, tree farms, et cetera. So it, it's such a, it's, it's such a dichotomy of zoning in that area that I'm not sure exactly how we, we got to, got to that point. The other, the other thing that I, that I find a, a bit interesting as well too, and I guess somebody's already made the point, is, is in, in regards to the usage of the road. We recently just found out that that area in terms of state roads is under the GPAT system as opposed to the SPATs system. There was a public hearing that was actually held in this facility about a week ago in regards to that area down there. And I know myself and Mr. Booker, were you present?
I was not.
Were there for that. Part of our challenge is going to be the SC DOT's ranking and rating of Abner Creek Road and Brockman McCliman Road. Right now, Abner Creek Road is ranked at six percent of its capacity. So putting that into a formula is not going to get us moved to the top of the list unless we can convince them that there are substantial changes taking place down there at this point. So it's a, it's a, it's a difficult proposition and I don't know that, in my case, where I have obviously made decisions that may not have, have, have been prudent in some regards to allow residential in that area, to allow two, two wrongs to, to make a right. So I, I, I think there is, I think there is merit to allowing Abner Creek Road to be the line of demarcation. Others?
Well, when I rode down through there, I was surprised at the number of constructions that's going on, on the land that's cleared and, excuse me, one thing I noticed when I turned off of Brockman McCliman onto Abner Creek, the homes that are being built up here on the left, I mean, it's just, when you kind of look at it, it was like their, their view is like ten feet away and of warehouses and things like that. So I think it has developed more and, and I guess at the time that was voted to become industrial, there wasn't that much construction going on as far as residential. And now with the residential growth out there, there has to be four or five subdivisions going on out there now.
There is.
So I, I just think that it's not conducive to the neighborhood at this time. But then I look at the gold spot over there and I'm not sure, but that looks, I believe that's new construction going up through there, so they're kind of intruding on the business end up there. Is that right? Is that right?
That's over there.
Yes, that's over to the park.
Yeah. I mean, if it does, if it does stay residential suburban, it just changed the fact that it still abuts the Commerce Park. In fact, it may have butted on two sides.
Yeah, and there's, I think you're right that Avner Creek probably ought to be that line, because you have, well, there's an, there's three, and you're looking at that photograph, you have three unincorporated parcels of land, and that, to the, all of that is contiguous to S-one, which is almost I-one, correct? Could you, I could say that?
Yes, it's a little bit less intense, but very similar uses, Services District.
And so, here again, are we going to be back in the same situation? Because you got, if S-one wanted to develop up, you know, what would, what would be our response at that point, because it's already zoned? And then, the unzoned parcels, they can, at this point, they can basically do what they want. Their highest and best use, you know, whatever they decide it to be, may not be comparable with what surrounds.
Mr. Irwood, I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. Can you say that one more time?
Well, you've got three parcels of land that are unincorporated.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's no zoning.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the two parcels that front Avner Creek, the large parcel, and then there's fire station parcel, the rear of that butts up to S-one. So, I, I don't know, I just think, you know, we've got to, we've got to find an area or a location that says we're not going further than here.
From the conversations I've had with our neighbors in the area, I don't think they'd have any problem with S-one developing that way. What's currently S-one? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, what I'm saying is that, more than likely, this, this parcel property on bottom, that if it, if it develops, you know, if it's residential, well, that's putting it back up against S-one. If it, if it develops and they come in and want to be S-one or I-one, because it's very close and its uses, we're back in the same situation, so.
You're right, that will be a fun discussion in of itself again at a future date. What I've heard a lot about is what we're considering here on that other corner. So, my, I guess my final way I'll frame it is, you know, Overton, the folks who buy a home in Overton, specifically maybe in that northern part of Overton, they know, they know what they're getting into, they know what their properties are up against, right? The reality is, down there on, on the corner, you've got Saddle Brook, you've got, you know, Catty Corner across the way, Fiennes Creek, you know, these developments, if you've got a good arm, you could throw a rock, you know, you know, from your, from your backyard and hit this piece of property we're talking about.
Sure.
Hundreds of homes, hundreds of homes.
Well, in that vein, as far as proximity is concerned, you know, I went out to the property as well, and then looking at the aerial earlier, another thing you notice as far as proximity is, eighty-five is within a few thousand feet of this parcel. The Ports Authority is within a few thousand feet, so is an international airport. There, the land use map that we've had in place says that this is industrial, and I'm, and I, and it's almost like we're treating this like this, this project exists on its own island, it doesn't. I was looking at another property that I actually owned, a property on Mockingburg Lane, which is right off of Buncombe Road, and it backs up, you know, back to Rich Glen, which is inside of the city, and Rich Glen is densely populated, and it has not touched or impacted property values in that area, and in fact, all of those properties abut, or the backside of that property abuts, or is adjacent to a light industrial development, very similar to this, in fact, it's on thirty acres, it's just like this. And so, it's not inconsistent with what we do inside the city, and our planners have set this in place for a reason, and it goes back to kind of what Rick said about the questions we had with staff earlier about, you know, when we were tossing around the towing ordinance, I mean, staff has recommended this. And, and kind of to Rick's point earlier, with, with Overton, staff did not recommend, it was, it was C-three, they did not recommend that R-seven-point-five whenever, in 2018.
I get what you're saying, I think there's a little bit of difference here, we're not picking apart little nuances of an ordinance here, you know, we're talking about, can we make, can we make exceptions? Certainly, we've done it before, right? I think the future land use map, we all have respect for, it's, it's a very useful tool. Again, the last eighteen to twenty-four months, you know, and for, for me, means that, you know, the way I'm viewing it, it is a little bit different. We've already made an exception in the area. I, I'm not, I'm not saying this, this, that we can't keep having one step after another after another to ignore it, but this, this makes a clean Brockman McLeimmon, Avner Creek kind of finishes what's been started already out there if we do allow this particular corner at some future date to go residential, for me, anyway.
So, just, for the purpose of discussion, if the, if the motion fails, it can be reconsidered, excuse me, it can be reconsidered for a year in terms of rezoning. Let's say a year passes, what would you anticipate the best and highest use for that piece of property to be at this, at that junction? I mean, under residential suburban, we're talking about minimum lot size of three-quarters of an acre, we're not going to have one-acre homes on that corner.
I don't see that, I think our neighbors.
In terms of transitional, we look to multifamily or townhomes typically. Do you think that would be the highest and best use, or C-three, commercial, or?
I think, I think that would be more consistent with the way the area has developed, in my opinion, be more consistent with the way.
Commercial?
No, even something like, like townhomes.
Townhomes or multifamily?
I think it would be more welcomed by the area.
So, we had, but not long ago, actually, some of the same folks that are in our audience tonight were here, they were opposing the townhomes.
You know, you know that area as well as I do, that, that was a very different piece. The opposition to that was very different reasons than the opposition to this, and my guess is the discussion would be very different if there was a residential proposal coming to us that included townhomes. My guess, the discussion would be very different from the constituents in the area. But a lot of conversations, I know you have too, I've had a lot of conversations, in person and otherwise.
So, potentially, a combination of townhomes and commercial, then?
I can see that.
I mean, we've got, we've got one of those developments that are going to be in 101 and two.
Two ninety-six, 101 Reedville Road, yeah, where that triangle converges.
Some sort of mixed use.
Yeah.
I think that would be much more.
Restaurant.
Much more welcomed.
All the space, townhomes.
And again, provide some, but for Saddle Brook, for just the area in general, provide more of a buffer, more of a transition. I'm not anti-industrial by any means, you all know that, I'll say that for anybody here. You know, that strip between the eighty-five, absolutely, it make, it absolutely makes sense for it to be industrial, but the reality is, this specific area, over the last two years, has turned residential.
It's just built up so fast.
It just, it just has.
And the thing is, it's not complete, I mean, they got gravy going on out there now for more homes.
So, so what is the primary difference between I-one and S-one?
There's not much, there's just a few more intense uses.
Is it the definition of the use of the property, is that it?
Yeah, I believe the height may be a little different, but the, the uses, if you compare them, are very similar. Again, that's something in the UDO that we won't have an S-one anymore.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's so close to I-one, we'll just be doing I-one and more of an office park.
That gives me enough, that gives me enough direction, though. Yeah, I understand, all of this, if you want to put it under one umbrella, is growth. And growth is neither good nor bad, it's what you, what we make of it, and there's still going to be, there's going to be, there's going to be good consequences and there'll be bad consequences, and that's, that's for everything. And the arguments that's been put forth by this council, and some of the folks came and spoke, could have been arguments made by existing property owners that are not in the city, they have one, two-acre lot, and then, well, I wasn't expecting a hundred-acre or hundred-house development right beside me. I moved out here because there was no, there was no traffic, you know, Avner Creek, although it's, it needs more improvement, it was, it was really a farm road, and so, and part of my thinking, you've got to go back and, and say, okay, all of this thinking has always been there, it just changes with the size of the property, or the kind of property, or the development, and we just have to, we have to do our best, and I know you have, you've been down there meeting with, with your folks a lot, and we've all taken phone calls. So, it's, it's just, it's an area that was ripe for development for years and years and years and years and years, and it's hit, and so.
And here we are.
Yeah, yeah. It's why we get paid big bucks.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's right, I think things, you know, it's, things happen quickly, and, and, you know, five years ago, who would imagine this area would look like it, what it does now? Who would imagine that we had, you know, a single warehouse of over a million square feet down there? They would imagine there was going to be two dedicated bridges across eighty-five. You know, it's, it's a conundrum that in large measure, we have, we have created and we need to address to.
To make sure that, you know, that we offer what, what protection that we, that we can and, you know, and, and move on. Others?
I just want to say thank you for everyone that came out today, but I do want to say, you know, how do we salvage a bad situation in which we went against the future land use map? Do we go straight industrial, or I kind of like the mixed-use pitch that was thrown out there, and, and then you, you know, you'll have a nice transition between that industrial parcel, go mixed-use, and then residential. I think that, if somebody can make that concept work, if this doesn't go through, they get a year to, you know, work on that, so, thank you all for coming.
I don't disagree. I think prob, part of what we need to understand, though, is that we don't control, other than zoning questions, what goes there and what doesn't. You know, that, that is going to require a request on behalf of the new owners of the property, and so, what we might like to see, and I know I had lots of people say, well, I would rather have a church there, I think a shopping center needs to go there, or ought to be doctor's offices, or, you know, ought to be a library, or whatever. We don't control that, and, and so, you know, while we would, we'd like to see that, you know, just depending on what our zoning winds up being, or what the owners of, the new owners of the property, or potential owners of the property want to do with it, is what's going to come back before us, and I think that's the only way the highest and best use is ever decided in some cases, is, is what somebody is willing to pay for it and then, and then use it for it within the parameters we give them. Others?
Comments? Questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Irwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
We'll move to the first reading of ordinance number thirty-four dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Peggy Hinson located at nine forty-five Brockman McLeimmon Road from RS Suburban Residential to I-one Industrial District. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is piece number two of the five parcels that are related to ordinance thirty-three, so I put the, the, the graphic on the board that shows the, the five pieces, and we can wait a second.
You want to wait just a second, I think people want to, want to leave, we'll accommodate that. We'll facilitate it. It's between there and eighty-five, though.
Didn't it go all the way through the piece behind that? That industrial park, I'm not going to remember something.
I didn't know the answer to that.
Okay, so Mike, Mike's going to tell you as soon as this is over. All right, council, let's, let's resume discussion, we are on item number five of the agenda, this is ordinance, excuse me, help me out, Ms. Duncan, we are.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four dash twenty-twenty-two. We are on thirty-four dash twenty-twenty-two. This is Nordish, changes zoning classification of property owned by Michael and Nancy Smith located at seven ninety-two Brockman McLeimmon Road from RS to I-one. Ms. Cotty?
Yes, so sorry, this is property number two of the five that are requesting rezoning to I-one, that is part of the proposed Global Commerce Park expansion, so you have the graphic up on the screen that shows you the different parcels that are associated with the ordinance numbers. So, this is one of the smaller one-acre parcels. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Second. Motion is second, floor is open for discussion. Questions?
For the record, I'll say ditto.
Ditto.
The previous discussion.
Comment? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Irwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker? Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, item number six, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Jeffrey and Amy Harvey located seven eighty-eight Brockman McLeimmon Road from RS to I-one.
Sure, again, this is parcel number three of the five that are requesting industrial zoning as part of the proposed Global Commerce Park expansion.
Before we move on, and I'm, I am sorry, was a representative of the owner of the properties that we spoke about, Michael and Nancy Smith, with us this evening? Record may indicate that they've already left. Same thing with number six, is anybody from the Jeffrey or Amy Harvey family here? And then, item number seven, Brian Hinson, anybody representing Brian Hinson here this evening? Okay, let's, we'll go back then to item number six. No new or additional information in that regard? Entertain a motion to receive.
Don't move.
And a second. Second. Floor is open for discussion. Floor's open for discussion. Questions?
For the record, ditto.
Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to item number seven. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Brian Hinson, located at seven eighty-four Brockman-McClyman Road, from RS to I-one. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is the fourth of five parcels that are requesting the rezoning as part of the Global Commerce Park expansion. Um, as you can see, this property fronts Brockman-McClyman and adjacent to the other ordinance numbers thirty-three through thirty-five and thirty-seven.
And I believe we've established that there's no one here to represent Mr. Hinson, is that correct? Okay, with that, then I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
I need one of those, this is a second, please. Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions?
Ditto previously.
Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to item number eight. This is the first reading of ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance, changes zoning classification of property owned by Ralph and Peggy Hinson, located at seven eighty, Brockman-McClyman Road, from RS to I-one. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is the fifth and final parcel that's part of the request for the Global Commerce Park expansion, rezoning to I-one.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record didn't indicate, no one, um, indicated, so I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Comments?
And one more time, ditto.
Questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we'll move to item number nine tonight. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by the City of Greer, located on Gap Creek Road, by one-hundred percent petition, and to establish a zoning classification of R-twenty for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is an annexation request for property that should look really familiar to you guys. Um, it was recently purchased by the city adjacent to the Greer Golf Course. Um, it was recently subdivided from one larger parcel into two smaller. So you'll see on your screen, um, the southern piece, and then the piece, um, above Gap Creek Road, to the north of it, that has the star on it, it's now a separate parcel. Um, but, so both parcels are under consideration tonight to go from unincorporated county to, um, RS resi- resi- sorry, R-twenty, um, single-family residential, um, which does allow, um, country club and recreational uses. This is the current zoning map. Again, it is adjacent to the existing Greer Golf, um, and, um, open space. And then this is the future land use, um, suburban neighborhood. This is a current street view of the project. And then a planning commission, um, will hold a public hearing, um, later this month, on next Monday. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
As the de facto owner, would you like to address this situation for us, and why we're doing what we're doing to make sure that it, uh, meets our goals and objectives?
It absolutely does. Mr. Mayor, I want to say to you and council, again, congratulations on the purchase of this property. Um, it is definitely going to enhance the recreational opportunities for the citizens of Greer, um, and maintain valuable open space. So, uh, as we were directed as staff to, uh, negotiate the terms of this, this purchase, the intent is that it be recreational, and will remain recreational on this southern piece.
Thank you, sir. Undertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we have the first reading of ordinance number forty-three dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property or a portion of a property, ten-foot strip owned by L.E.M. Holdings LLC, located on Old Highway fourteen and East Phillips Road, by one-hundred percent petition, and to establish a zoning classification of I-one for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Um, yes, the, um, developer representative called staff this afternoon and asked if we could hold this item until the August ninth, um, council meeting.
At their request, have, have we pulled it, or do we need to take action to ho- hold it over?
I would just, uh, recommend, uh, council take action to hold it over, sir.
Undertain a motion to hold over.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Any discussion in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Ms. Cotty, is ordinance number forty-four dash twenty-two in the same? Oh. No, I didn't. I got ahead of myself. Um, yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. Been a long evening.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Cotty, I understand ordinance number forty-three is in the same vein, is that correct?
Yes, forty-four is similar to forty-three. They asked to hold it.
Excuse me, forty-four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the first reading of ordinance number forty-four dash twenty-two, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain property owned by Winker Incorporated, located on East Phillips Road, by one-hundred percent petition, and to establish a zoning classification of, for I-one. I'll entertain a motion that that be held over.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, first and final reading of resolution number thirteen dash twenty-two. This is a resolution to accept Briar Ridge subdivision streets, namely Mendonan Lane and Freehold Way into the City of Greer street system. Mr. Rue joins us for that conversation.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening, I have the Briar Ridge subdivision streets. Uh, the project, uh, started in August of twenty eighteen. It's located off of Hood Road, across from the Mitsubishi, Mitsubishi plant, in Council District Five. All utilities are in, streets are paved, and it is completely built out at sixty-seven single-family residential units. Staff has inspected the construction of the roads and infrastructure, and believes it meets city standards. Therefore, staff recommends Mendonan, Mendonan Lane with a length of one thousand five hundred seventy feet, and Freehold Way with a length of six hundred fifty-four feet be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance.
Item twelve comes with a recommendation from staff, do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions?
What is, what is that site that's directly beside Briar Ridge? Is that Miss Adishi?
Yes, sir, yeah, it's across the street.
Okay, so that's I-one, that's the residential, right?
I don't have the map in front of me.
It's not, it is, it's functionally industrial, Mr. Dumas, but it is in unincorporated Greenville County, so we have not zoned it.
It's a, it's a chemical plant, though, correct? So it's a, the, the, what we just went through is much less intensive than its use.
Film, film, it's a film use.
They do poly, polyfilm, but yes.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, final item this evening is item number thirteen, first and final reading of resolution number fourteen dash twenty-two. A resolution to accept Sudeth Farms spaces one B, one C, two A, two B, and two C subdivision streets, namely Yellow Fox Road, Corble Drive, Sudeth Farms Drive, General Store Way, and Homestead Hill Trail into the City of Greer street system. Mr. Rue?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you mentioned, Sudeth Farms streets got phase one B, one C, two A, two B, and two C. Have them highlighted here on the graphic I have in front of you, with the red lines there. Uh, the remaining roads are currently being repaired, and, uh, final surface asphalt is, uh, pending, so that's why we're not taking those in at this time. Uh, so Sudeth Farms began in November twenty eighteen. Uh, it's located off Super Road and Highway fourteen, in Council District Six. Uh, the streets in question in these phases highlighted in front of you, all utilities are in, streets are paved. Uh, ninety-three total units in these phases are complete, and overall development of three hundred fifty-three, three hundred fifty-three total units are also complete in the entire development, just for the record. Uh, staff has inspected the construction of these roads and believes they meet city standards. Therefore, we recommend Yellow Fox Road with a length of one thousand ninety-three feet, Corble Drive with a length of nine hundred forty-five feet, Sudeth Farms Drive with a length of five hundred feet, General Store Way with a length of one thousand two hundred eighty-four feet, and Homestead Hill Trail with a length of five hundred thirty feet be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Council, the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council, in executive session, we have three items to discuss this evening. The first, oh, and, um, we've got, uh, two, all three contractual matters. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss three contractual matters. One pertains to Project Keystone, and the second to Project Lineout, and the third to Project Slapshot, and that's allowed by state statute, section thirty dash four, seventy-eight-two.
Comes as a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we'll stand in executive session. Um, if you will give us the counsel, um, we will tell you when we're finished with our business.
Next.